This is a notice of an open meeting in the City of Kimberlyne City with Board Alderman. Our regular meeting may start at 7:00 PM. With the technology that we have a form. If you use a moment of silence for however wish to use it, please. If you all will stand ready, I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and liberty and justice for all.
I thank you all for being here. We'll start with the agenda and the public comments on presentations. Next is approval of amendments from previous meetings. I need a motion for approval of amendments from our meeting held April 4th, 2017. Approval of the minutes of work session held April 19, 2017.
I'll go ahead and make that motion that we approve the minutes of our regular meeting held April 4th.
I have a motion for Mrs. Stump. I need a second, please.
Second.
I have a second for Mr. Martin. Discussion. Mrs. Stump?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
So approved. Next is the presentation. My report. I need a motion for approval of paid disbursements worth $33,552 from April 5th, 2017 through April 21st, 2017. The total scheduled payments of $14,829.92 from April 22nd, 2017 through May 2nd, 2017, totaling $48,350.44.
Maybe they wasn't there.
I have a motion for Mr. Moore. I need a second, please.
I'll second that.
I have a second for Mrs. Stump. Discussion. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mrs. Stump?
Aye.
So passed. Next on the agenda is Larry Brown, our City Treasurer. Report as treasurer report. Mr. Brown?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I leave everyone to keep the copy of the various investment summary requests, requests, natural reports about some of the things earlier. Briefly go over that for sunrise, the month of March, what we're talking about tonight, and how we're doing as far as the three months ended September 31st, 2017. Total receipts of $149,000 for March. They go to a total of $127,000 for the year, or about 21% of the budget. You've got a budget of two, a budget of two. We're really close to the 25% right where we should be as far as this time of year. As far as the total revenues, we had about $45,000 above what we had last March. There were sales tax received about $149,000. It's up $10,000 from a year ago, March. As far as fine income of $19,000, it's up about $3,500. And we had sewer revenues of $190,000, which is about $8,000 over prior March 2016. Disbursements of $196,000 for this month totaling $458,000 over the three months. That's 22% of the budget of $21,000 for the year. The major items that happened in March, we spent $29,000 on the new Ford SUV for the police department, and I believe part of that's being reimbursed by a grant for the police. We also had workers comp that we paid in March, it's about $31,000 per year. The workers comp was down from prior year, mainly because we didn't have sewer employees that we have, as far as the cost of that. You totally find out about $14,000 in station repairs. Overall, as far as the cash investments, March 31st, we had a total in the general fund of $588,000. We have $277,000 in the street. Water and sewer, $844,000, for a total of $1.7 million. That's running quickly, but I know that you have seen this before. Are there any questions? Are there any areas you'd like to move on?
Just for Jerry, the only one department that's over the 25% is police. Is part of that the car?
Part of it's the car. Part of it is some of the money spent on the remodel should have been coded upstairs.
It seems like 37% compared to everybody else is around 20, 21%.
Yeah. Crown back income is in there, and then the grant income. So we budgeted $22,000 for the car. So we have $5,500 from the sale of the Crown back, plus another almost $5,500 from the grants to cover the balance.
That new vehicle actually $50,000. We didn't know if it was going to be sold or not, but that's great.
Any questions for Mr. Brown? Thank you. Next is greeting the bills. Bill 17-621, Resolution 432, Resolution approved in the 2017 City of Kimmerlyne City employee handbook for the City of Kimmerlyne City. I think you all agree at all had a copy of the changes that were made, that were made book. Are there any questions? If not, I'd like to have a motion from the board to accept the 2017 City of Kimmerlyne City employee handbook so it can be distributed to the employees. I believe that they've already been distributed, but this would be the changes and everything else that would be.
We didn't distribute it yet.
No.
We waited.
Yeah. Thank you, sir.
I make a motion that we approve Bill 17-621.
I have a motion for Mr. Moore. I need a second, please.
Second.
I have a second for Mr. Martin. Discussion. Mrs. Stump?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
So passed. Next, Bill 17-622, Resolution 433, approving the amendment to the 2017 operating budget for the City of Kimmerlyne City. This was discussed and went over with our last work session. I'd like to have a motion for this bill.
I'll go ahead and make that motion that we approve Bills 17-621, Resolution 433.
I have a motion for Mrs. Stump. I need a second, please.
Second.
I have a second for a second for a discussion. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mrs. Stump?
Aye.
So passed. Next is unfinished business, Great River Engineering Invoice. This is a first installment for the comprehensive plan for $25,000. This was in the budget for 2017. I'd like to have a motion to make this payment.
Make the motion, Mary. Will you make the payment for Great River Engineering?
I have a motion for Mr. Moore. I need a second, please.
Second.
I have a second for Mr. Martin. Mrs. Stump?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
So passed. Next is TR Management LLC, ABA Kimmerlyne.
Ask a question, please. I'm sorry. What's the next thing, next thing in their timeline, Great Rivers timeline?
I think we're going to be having another meeting if they're not, if Mr. Martin in August.
I think it should be the next public forum.
Thank you.
So they should have some deliverables from what we've already discussed.
And their, their next public meeting would be for them to present to citizens something like a preliminary version, is that?
Yeah.
Yes?
Would they have their draft so far, plus results from the survey? There's now another online survey that'll be going out. So hopefully they'll get some more feedback from the public from there.
Thank you.
I'll say they don't like today, Dave.
And we appreciate you helping us with it, getting it out to the community.
Well, you guys are going to have to start foregoing some money.
You consider your bill to bar.
Sure.
I got you, Dave.
Next, continuing the TR Management LLC, ABA Kimmerlyne, new liquor license approved letter. I'm going to turn this over to Barb, our city clerk.
Okay. The last letter said, cafe and the top floor, the whole place, and so Laura called the liquor, state liquor license, and you can only have one liquor license per building, and Bridgeview Cafe is part owned by Jay, so the liquor license is going to be for the Kimmerlyne Inn. So it would be just one liquor license, and that is what they're asking for.
So I need a motion for TR Management for the coming in new liquor licenses. I need a motion for this, please.
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion for Mr. Martin. Need a second, please.
Second.
I have a second for Mr. Moore. Mrs. Stump?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
So passed. Do you have a business city clerk to re-certify the luxury resort from April 7, 2017 election?
This is Barb. Okay. This is the election from April 4th, 2017. The certification is in Ward 1. Virgil Moore, his vote was 51, a write-in of two. So Virgil won the vote, won the vote. Alderman Ward 1. Ward 2 would be Ed Vice Line for 53, a write-in of three. So he won the, he's our new alderman of Ward 2. Kimmerlyne City questions for the Golden Acres was 100 yes, 24 no. So it won to sell or convey Golden Acres to a third party. So that, so that patient from the city, the county clerk is City Elmore, and it's Virgil. Go out front here.
I thought it might have you take it.
Yep.
Extra notes.
I got you.
I got you.
Do you remember the last one?
The other gentleman there?
Yes, yes. Right there, right there.
Okay. You're going to do these both at the same time?
Yep, I'm going to do Virgil first, and then I'll do him.
Sorry, can I take a picture of both together?
Absolutely.
Thanks.
After I'm done swearing a man, I'll go ahead and let you take a picture. Hey, raise your right hand. I, Virgil Moore, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States of America.
I, Virgil Moore, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution, Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution and laws of the State of Missouri.
And the ordinance of the City of Kimmerlyne City that I will faithfully perform the duties of my office as alderman Ward 1, for which I was duly elected the fourth day of April 2017.
And the ordinance of the City of Kimmerlyne City, and that I will faithfully perform the duties of my office as alderman Ward 1, for which I was duly elected on the fourth day of April 2017.
There you go. That's yours. I need both of them signed also.
Ed, Ed Ward, please. You're still wearing my bar.
You got your new cards, too? I'm going to give you a copy so you don't have to memorize it, okay?
Okay, okay. That's good.
That's your copy. We can't memorize things. I need you to raise your right hand. I, Ed Vice Line, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States of America.
I, Ed Vice Line, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Missouri and the ordinance of the City of Kimmerlyne City.
The Constitution, the State of Missouri, and the ordinance of the City of Kimmerlyne City.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of my office as alderman Ward 2, for which I was duly elected on the fourth day of April 2017.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of my office as alderman Ward 2, for which I was duly elected on the fourth day of April 2017.
There you go. Lovely. Thank you. Did you sign these? Sign them. Sign them. And that's yours.
We're wearing winter clothes yesterday morning.
There you go. Now you can take, yeah, you can take, make sure you can, make sure you can set your spot on the table.
Well, you guys stand there and act like you're being sworn in, like that didn't just happen. Look at her. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the mayor's appointment to each of the committees. My appointments for this next year, I'm keeping Virgil Moore at Economic Development. I'm asking if Michelle would please, being the alderwoman, planning and zoning. I'm asking if Christian Martin would let he serve on parks. And I'm asking Ed, Mr. Lee, our new alderman, to go on the police committee. Those are the appointments for the committees. Next on the agenda, as you all know, every year we have an appointment from the board here to select a mayor pro temp. Virgil Moore is serving right now as mayor pro temp. And for the board, for say, we'd like to do for a mayor pro temp, this coming year. Mrs. Stump, do you have any motions or?
Yeah, I don't think there's any. I'm glad I made a motion that we, well, let me rephrase that. I'm not making a motion. I will make a nomination.
Nomination, there you go.
Of Virgil Moore.
Okay. I have a nomination for Virgil Moore to continue as mayor pro temp. Any other nominations? Those who wish to see Virgil Moore continue as mayor pro temp, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? There's three ayes on one night. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Oh, do that.
Next on our agenda is Donna Nomi Gibbs, 17 Paola, recommendation letter from Planning and Zoning. This is for, I need a motion. Mr. versus Gibbs went to Planning and Zoning about last week, was it not?
Yes.
And they got a letter from Planning and Zoning for their recommendations with their land.
No.
Yeah.
Um, I was at P&amp;D, but they currently have a house that they bought from a previous owner that had encroached onto the, off their property line. They, after they bought it, they had surveyed and realized what happened. They're now selling the home, and we're not asking the new people to tear it down. We're allowing them to keep it as is, but they cannot further encroach, encroach onto the city.
It's not property line, setback.
Step backs.
Step backs. It doesn't need the current setback.
And I have a copy of the survey, which we are going to enter with this letter if it's approved by the board.
So you need a motion from this board to make, to approve this recommendation from Planning and Zoning law with them to keep everything as is for the lawyers, with no adjustments from the ownership.
I'll go ahead and make that motion.
Motion for Mrs. Stump. I need a second, please. I have a second for Mr. Martin. Discussion. Mrs. Stump?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
So passed. Oh, I'm sorry. I just saw that. I was listening.
Okay. So if you want to just sit there and approve, we'll, we'll make sure.
I'm sorry, sorry, I didn't hear your mo.
He said aye.
Aye. Thank you. So passed. Mr. Martin, you have a question?
I'll put it with the survey so you're good. No, I have a copy of it. He's used to it.
Thank you very much. Good luck. Good luck.
I'm going to have to wait.
Appreciate it. Next is Brian McDevitt, Fire Marshal of Southern Stone County Fire Protection. He's going to address the board regarding light and rentals. Brian, can you come here, please?
Good evening, Mayor Council. Thank you for this opportunity to come visit with y'all. As the fire marshal with Southern Stone County, we officially appointed code enforcement officer, which means we have authority to enforce the fire code throughout our district, which is we come into all publicly occupied buildings and do safety, by safety inspections, make sure the emergency lights work, exit signs, smoke alarms, fire extinguishers, things like that. One thing that we have run across is we, there's problems not only in Kimmerlyne, Kimmerlyne City areas throughout Stone County and our district, and you're like the last entity that I've had opportunity to come visit with. We are fixing to start going and hunting these nightly rentals down and inspecting them. If they refuse to be inspected by our entity, for our code that we've adopted, we do have the authority to have utilities turned off. It's not a big thing. We just want to know where they are. We want to make, we want to make it that the property there allowing public to come into is safe, just like your building here. I inspected it a couple of weeks ago, and there's the certificate proof. It's the same thing that y'all go through in every other commercial entity within our district. This hasn't been getting done in the past. Why, I don't know. I just came back to the district last May, and I noticed this problem, and it's not, and it's not. It's over in Branson, it's over in Tanne County. What's happening is people that don't even live here are coming in, surviving a single family dwelling in a residential neighborhood, slapping a coat of paint on it, and then they're renting it out. They go to a property management entity or something like that. They collect a check, and then it's a hardship on the water, the sewer, the neighbors with the parking, and the trash, and everything else. Plus, we don't know if it's actually safe to be safe to. We go in, and like I say, we ensure that it's safe for human occupancy, so to speak. And, well, we're going to be coming in, and so I wanted to come let you know about this because, like you said, everything's, y'all on the bridge, they think we were the Kimmerlyne City Fire Department, and you're not going to get a call because I, we know the addresses. I mean, they, they just advertise them on internet. In a list, several of them are in Kimmerlyne City. We will go out, knock on the door, introduce ourselves, tell us what we're trying to do. If there's nobody there, whatever, we have a red sign, red sticker that we stick on the door and say this property is required to be inspected before it's occupied for the use, its ability to be useful right now. Please contact us to schedule an inspection. So we figure they probably call you, all the phone numbers there, and they'll up here and say something to y'all. And we just wanted to let y'all know what we were doing and why we were doing it, and we have the authority through the state, through our adopted codes, and everything else. Like y'all go out and enforce your building code that you've adopted, it's the same thing. We enforce the private.
Don't we have an ordinance prohibiting that? So if you are aware of them, then we need to let, let you be aware of them so that we can also, in this minute, to check against.
We kind of discussed this when I came up to get on the agenda. That's the whole purpose. I can't do this by myself. It has a, it has to have a community or a team, right? So if I find something, I will come by and say, I just put stickers on these because I know y'all don't allow it. I think you told me that in the morning.
In our one, we don't allow it except one that was approved years ago by the, by the.
And so that's, that's what's happening, is I go over to the Stone County Planning and Zoning, and they're going to do the same thing. And whenever they, I get a copy of their planning and zoning agenda, and I know who's trying to do what, and I go over there and eat, so I may start coming to y'all's.
I can send you that.
If you send the agenda, and it's something like somebody wanting to do that, because y'all might have a reputation, they say, well, they're not going to pass it anyway, so we won't even mess with it, but they're doing it anyway. And that's what we track down, is we go look at the ads, and then we go knock on the door, and if we do find something like that, we will come let you know that they are doing it, so you can take whatever steps you need to fix it.
Yeah, would it be okay if I asked a question, please?
Yes, sir.
And I'm not trying to be difficult, but.
Yeah, you are.
No.
That's in your nature.
Nightly rentals, and that includes the people who like to make money operating them, and the people who don't like the fact that they operate outside the law in Stone County for long time. The, the one thing that you mentioned, why, since they essentially operated outside city codes and county ordinances for eons here, so why, if you were to stick a red sticker on that door, and they faced much more stringent penalties for a lot of years than a red sticker from the fire department, I'm not saying that that's not, that's not another thing that should be done, because I think it clearly is. So, and I realize you're just doing your job as a fire marshal, but I was just curious why you thought that if they came from wherever they came from, if they were out of town and came back, and they saw your red sticker, why did you think that they might for one second, even second, even they haul? Because if you know something I don't know.
It's in the city, and if they see it, they think, most some people would think it was the Kimmerlyne City Fire Department. So they would naturally come up to the city and see.
Do you have some?
It does have a phone number on it. I'll show you one.
Well, no, that's okay, but I'm saying, do you have some evidence that would, because see, what I, the thing that mystifies me.
Can we get to here? We get to here. You say you talk about evidence and everything.
I would be thrilled, okay, I would be thrilled to know why a red sticker from the fire department might accomplish something that city government in Kimmerlyne City and some other cities in Stone County and county government have not been able to do. And I, you know, I'm mystified, if all we needed was a red sticker from the fire department, we should have gotten those 25 years ago.
Yes, sir. They should have been getting it. I don't know why, and like I say, I just got here last, got here last. The process when they're doing something that's violating zoning rules is number one, the city can go out and write a ticket, they can still operate. And you got lawsuits back and forth and back and forth, such as what this goddamn, off of, but there's one in Stone County, and they've been back and forth with lawsuits. Okay, what mine does, I don't care about zoning. I don't care about that. Mine is life safe, safe period. And I have through our codes, I can go say, this building needs to be inspected. If they say, yes, sir, come on in, they fill out an application, we document it, I go and do the inspection. If they pass, they get a permit. It's just that simple. If they refuse, then yes, sir. I have through my codes that the very last thing, and I got a copy of that right here if you'd like to see it, the very, the very last, I have the authority to request that the utilities be cut off from that piece of property because I have tried to inspect it, and it could potentially be an unsafe piece of property for the public to enter.
I understand all that part.
That's my authority.
No, I understand all that part, but the part.
Why it hasn't been done for the 25 years? I can't answer that question.
No. No. The part I don't understand is, and maybe you're saying, is, are you saying that the fire department has some authority that city government or county government neither one has?
Yes, sir. We are a sovereign duty formed by state statute entity, citizens voting to create the district. We have our own ordinances, we have our own codes, we have our own anything.
Right. So are you saying that you're, you're certain that, for instance, you can, you can order, even though they may not follow your orders, and then somebody else will have to get involved, but you can order them, you can order their utilities disconnected? Are you saying that cities and counties can't do so?
I don't know about cities and counties. They have their ordinances, we have ours. I'm just here to address what we do at this council, in case somebody comes up.
Thanks.
You guys are talking about like Airbnb or something like that?
Do what now?
Airbnb. You're not talking about like somebody.
Okay, what we're mainly talking about is a lot of these places that you see, like Puerto Kimmerlyne and stuff like that, those nightly rentals, yes, we go in and inspect them. We just did the Puerto Kimmerlyne and some of these other resorts. What we're, what's mainly happening is people will buy a single family residence in a neighborhood, okay? Then they end, they renting it out to people to come in for about nine or two, a week or whatever. Okay, what that does when they do that, that changes the occupancy of that piece of property from private residential to commercial residential. They are allowing the public to come in and pay a fee to utilize their piece of property. It's like walking in a grocery store, it's like walking in this, in this, anything.
I'm understanding that, but you're not talking about somebody that does like a yearly lease or?
No, that's rental property. That's completely different.
Okay.
You're talking about like duplex. Somebody buys a house and they rent it for a year, that's fine. I'm talking about anything that's less than 30 days.
That's what I wanted to hear.
Yeah, if they rent it for any period of time, less than 30 days, that's what's called a nightly rental. And that, and that, that's where we enforce it. Now, when somebody like builds a duplex, now we come in, they have to build it per our codes, see, because they're renting it to the public, but we make sure everything's built to the code.
Well, you're just talking about electric codes and regular occupancy codes, like railing has to be so high...
No, no, that's building, I do life safety, it signs, fire extinguishers, fire alarm, sprinkler systems, if the building's required to have one, alarm systems, we check all of that.
So 90% of these are not going to happen?
Emergency lighting, we check life safety, all the rest of it, handrails, door width, stuff like that, that's covered through their building code, that's where all of that is done.
Well, I, I mean, I've done this before, I've stayed at night in one of these places, none of them have what you're talking about.
Well, they will be, they'll have to get it.
Okay.
That's why we're starting to do this, because they either don't know or they just don't do it. But, I mean, the way I look at it, who's going to complain about his company checking the smoke alarms once a year or your fire extinguishers or whatever? You know, it's life safety, that's it.
Well, I understand if they don't allow you to do your inspection, that you can, you can have the facility shut off, what if they fail your inspection?
That we give them a period of time to meet it, and, and we're talking about simple things, put up an exit sign, put up some emergency, like that, it's not that hard, it's not, we're not going to go back and make them retrofit a sprinkler, you know, we're, we're working on that, but new ones, if they build a house and they intend to sell it, sell it for a rental, yes, that house will have to be built with a sprinkler system and meet all current fire codes.
But if, if you've given them the time to make the...
And they still don't do it, I can write up and say they continue to be in violation, and yes, I can go request that their utilities be cut off. That includes the water and that includes the electricity. I'm going over to visit with White River tomorrow. And per our code, our code dead.
Our department will give you the address.
You'd be surprised, people like the cities and the counties, they're glad, they said, "Finally, somebody can actually do something and you actually have some team to enforce it." See, that's what Stone County, they've been dealing with this one guy for over two years. They gave him a ticket, he went, "He's still running." They filed a lawsuit, he went, "That's, that's..." And then he countersued them, because they're trying to, they won't rezone it, because it's in a residential neighborhood. And people come up, just like this, "We don't want this here." So they say, "We're not going to rezone it." The commissioners, they vote not to rezone it, he, "I don't care about the neighbors," he keeps running. And this has been an ongoing thing and, uh, it's actually coming up, I think next week or so.
There's about 20 of them, 20 of them that I've seen.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's getting terrible, it really is. And it, it's, you know, we just all got together, the Fire Marshals from Branson and Western Tane, we just got together and said, "We got to do something," because, you know, it's not right. It's not about money, don't care about no money, it's just about making sure that the people that come visit us are not being put in danger by a slumwaltz, that's all it is. You know, we just want to make sure everybody's safe. And it's, it's, it's new, and that's why I wanted to come visit the council, we've got to know we're going to be doing it, because I guarantee you, somebody would just see the truck.
Well, the ordinance, the ordinances aren't new, just the enforcement.
Just the enforcement. They've had limited staff with the district, and now, and now I'm back, so, and I'm kind of aggressive, I'm from Texas, and I'm kind of aggressive, and I enforce the codes for everybody. And, uh, yeah, and that's why I'm getting out, and I'm glad Mr. Davis here, so he can put it to paper that that arrogant so-and-so Fire Marshal is going to start looking at, looking at nightly rentals, so you people better be aware of it.
Okay, I'm sorry, hold on a second, that one...
Now, now, that Eric, that Eric dude from Texas, that's what everybody says.
That Eric dude from Texas.
Yeah, make sure you put that in there, that we audit it, they will, they'll enjoy reading that. So I just want it to be information type thing, let y'all know.
I appreciate that, are there any questions? Thank you very much, I appreciate it, thank you for your service for our community and county. Uh, next is our 2017/17 approval of license renewals. As you have in front of you, you can see the list of, uh, the licenses that are now being, I mean, approval from the board to renew the following license by July 1st, 2017. You've got the list in front of you. I have a motion for approval.
I'll go ahead and make that motion.
I have a motion for Mrs. Supper, you have a second, please? Sorry. I have a second for Mr.... And discussion. Mr. Bylek, Weissline?
Hi.
Am I saying your name right up?
That's it.
Okay. I had a blast. Mr. Moore?
Hi.
Mr. Martin?
Hi.
Mrs. Stumpf?
Hi.
So fast. Uh, next, uh, our city clerk, Mrs. Hubbard, will open closed bids received on a 2003 Massey Ferguson tractor and a 2004 Ranger. She will share these bids with us, it looks like we've got a few, you know?
Okay, well, there's one I want to talk to you before. We had a little bit of confusion, it went, it went on a commit on Craigslist with no end date. So John and I talked about it and I told him, "Make it the end of the month." Uh, he did it three days from when he put it on, so there was some confusion, I received another bid. The person asked me, um, when it closed, I told him the 30th, I got the bid on the 28th, it actually closed on the 22nd, or the, no, it was, no, it was 12th or something like that. So I need to know if we can accept this bid, it's just a little bit miscommunication.
Any board members having any difficulty accepting this last minute bid a few days after it's closed?
No.
Okay, we're good?
No.
And?
Nope.
Okay, this is a bid on the Massey Ferguson for $7,000, $751.51 as is, from a Stuart Parkinson.
That's a tractor.
Yep. Hey, it's your lifesaver. This is from the same gentleman. It's a bid on Ford Ranger for two, for $21.51. Amazing what they think of. This is actually on the Massey Ferguson for $2,663 from a Dudley, Dudley, so that's that one. This one is on the Ford Ranger for $500 from a Roy... This is a bid on the Ranger for $1,300. And that's from Brian Smith. This is a bid on the tractor, don't laugh, this is my whole budget, it's worth a shot, thanks, for $2,000. And the last bid? This bid is for the tractor for $1,000 from Johnny Harrington. So... Really the highest?
Yes.
Yep.
We have bid, the highest bid for the Ford Ranger is from Brian Smith, six Red Bud, Trent Bud, Trenton, Missouri, for a bid, uh, for the 2000 Ford Ranger, his bid was $1,300. That's the highest bid for the Ford Ranger. And the other bid on, uh, tractor, bid was $2,663, asked for Dudley Haining from 5843 South State Highway Double F on Battlefield, Missouri, those are the two highest bids. I, I election from the board to accept these two bids from these gentlemen for the tractor, $2,663, and for the Ford Ranger for $1,300.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion for Mr. Martin, you have a second, please?
I'll second.
Now I have a second for Mrs. Stumpf, discussion. Mrs. Stumpf?
Hi.
Mr. Martin?
Hi.
Mr. Moore?
Hi.
Bryce Line?
Yeah.
Did I go wrong, what's the tractor, the Ranger?
Uh, Ranger was $1,200. And, uh, bid for the tractor was $2,663.
I'll call them up now. Okay.
Next is your Board of Officers, Board of Committees, Economic Development, Mr. Martin?
Uh, we met last Friday, it was a fairly short meeting, we had the floor almost the entire time, so I'm going to defer to him if he wants to touch on some of the points from that meeting.
Sure, real quick, David, how do you pronounce the bar, April?
Yes, April.
Uh, from Grammy Camp, he's, is the new chair of the Economic Development Committee. He and I had met briefly, just kind of get some direction, uh, we went to the board with kind of, kind of action, what we'd like to do is narrow the focus of the board. One of the ideas that, uh, Mr. April had was to resurrect the Business Association of Kimberly City Businesses. Uh, so we actually formed a letter which will be mailed out by the end of this week. It's going to be an initial meeting, trying to get some business and business and leaders in town to come to a meeting on May 24th at 7:00 PM, the Community Center. And the direction will be for these businesses to get together, kind of form a community, um, we can maybe do some workshops, have some educational seminars, have some guest speakers in, mainly promote Kimberly City Businesses. So that was the focus of that meeting, meeting.
Question, please. Is he, or, I'm asking the wrong person, I'm sorry, because he's not here, does anybody know if he's aware that we have a Chamber of Commerce?
Yes.
He does know.
He's a member.
Did he say that, did he offer some reason why he wanted to resurrect the Business Association?
I'm just trying to get the community more tight-knit within Kimberly City, um, maybe get the businesses to come to some of our Economic Development Committee meetings, more participation.
Uh, well, okay, I, I guess I should have, I'm sorry, been probably more focused. So he doesn't think that that's a proper venue for the Chamber of Commerce?
Um, I, it's just a different form of getting the businesses together.
Okay.
Well, the Chamber of Commerce is a table rock.
It's kind of a broader scale of the chamber.
Mark Ford, Mr. Henry isn't here, Mr. Hart.
Who's there?
Actually, it's Mrs. Hubbard.
Mrs. Hubbard?
Um, actually several things are moving forward, um, they are trying to, they're talking about, talking about, they need some of the money that they have in their account to an engineering firm come out and give them some ideas on the park on Lake Shore, um, see if they're heading in the right direction on that. They are going to be, um, they want to have a poker run to raise some more money, so they're going to continue to raise money while they're trying to figure out a plan for the park for where we can have them and stuff for parks where we can have them. So we had had the, had the Vietnam veterans here, and they're going to be doing, we sponsor, the city sponsored them, we're going to be having music up in the Kimberly City Shopping Center, um, every other weekend, um, from May 13th through October 14th. So my idea was, if, uh, Brian wants to have a poker run, he has the route, he's the chairperson of the park now, he has a route, um, of the poker run and all the stops, but he wanted it to end in Kimberly City, he was trying to figure out a place where we can end it. So my suggestion was, there are a lot of Vietnam vets that are bikers also, so I, my suggestion was to find out when they're going to have them in September, and they can end up there. So I contacted the Vietnam vets and they were tickled. They have several guys that are bikers and they would love to share and help raise money for the park and we, in turn, can help raise money for, money for, for the Vietnam vets. So we're going to have it sometime in September, so they worked on that, and then they're forming subcommittees and they're trying to come up with ideas for 4th of July, but mainly trying to get an engineer to come in and let them know what they can do with that pocket park over at Lake Shore.
I know there's three guys right there cleaning it up here, taking out trees.
Yep, they took some trees out.
Anything else, Mrs. Hubbard? Police Committee, Mrs. Stumpf?
We didn't have a meeting because we didn't have a forum.
Plan and zoning, Mr. Moore?
We met on the 24th, um, discussed, uh, the sign ordinance, uh, uh, Jason had brought some changes and everything and gave back to the zoning, planning the zoning to look over to see if there's any suggestions, any changes, so, um, he had spent some time on it and provided, uh, a new draft of it, so, um, we'll see at the next meeting, uh, what kind of feedback we have. The other thing was the 17 Paola, Paola issue was discussed and brought to here. Also, are we moving forward on a meeting or a public meeting for the issues, the variances? Yeah, there was, um, we have some gentleman here that wants to build on some of these smaller lots that are within the city, do not currently meet the 15,000 square foot requirement, um, and all, and all, in order to build on those smaller properties, they won't meet the thousand minimum square foot for the first floor. So he has requested that we move forward with variance, um, to see about doing that, and, um, he presented a very nice drawing of what he would like to do and the houses look like they would be fine. Um, that's an issue we've had is, this area over here on the side of 13, there are a lot of lots that you have to combine in order to get close to the 15,000 square foot, and so when people either have to buy two to three lots to do that, um, so we will be moving forward with a public meeting here, hopefully in June, I think.
Florida's here for June.
For June, that will allow the public, well, at least the, the neighbors that are surrounding that area to, to give their opinions to whether they would agree with that type of scenario, so, um, and it's something the city will eventually have to look at, possibly if we have others continuing to want to do that, because we do have a lot size issue here in town, it doesn't meet what we have set forward is what we should have, so, um, so we'll see how the public responds, or at least the neighbors respond to this new scenario. But in order for him to do it, he has required two variances, size of lot and size of building, so, and that was about all, I think, the, you're still working on, um, the fees?
Yep. Research and permits fees. Those costs.
Those were the main discussions of finding the...
Anything else, Mr. Moore?
Yep.
Senior Administrator, Mr. Harmon?
From our work session last month for Golden Water, since that passed, letters were sent out to PWSD 1, those are Clean Water and Missouri American, we also, um, published it in the paper that the system is for sale, so what bar, we give them 30 days, so we'll see if we get some offers there. I know Missouri American is interested. PWSD, I believe they are, but we'll let them respond. From the storms and rainfall over the weekend, Public Works, they were out all day on Saturday, um, clearing debris, culverts, closed Lake Shore for a while. Out of the debris, uh, citizens had already been preparing for the spring cleanup, so they had filled some culverts with, um, yard debris and limbs and things that probably shouldn't have been there, so that kind of compounded the situation. I want to thank Alliance and Dan, Dan was at the wastewater plant on weekend, monitoring it, um, everything was safe there, thank you, Dan, for all those hours, those hours, appreciate that. Um, because of the INI and extra water, there were a couple lift stations that had some overflow that were reported, um, the plant...
The plant, also there's a spill that was bypassed, that was reported as well. So it's pretty much common for, with nine inches of rain in a day for these things to happen, so Alliance has taken care, taken care.
Why did it close Lake Shore?
Uh, because of the pond was overflowing over the road. I think it came actually down from Golf Crest and the hill and down. That's all I have. Mayor's comments, uh, Mr. Harmon and I attended the chamber meeting last Thursday. We were asked by the chamber to, um, give them some information on where Kimberling City is at today and we're hoping to report in the future. And I give credit to Mr. Harmon, he did a wonderful PowerPoint that everybody seemed to enjoy and, um, I think we did a pretty good job, we did both, we did both. He covered something, I covered the employees. Like I told the chamber, I think our biggest asset to Kimberling City are our employees, the staff that we have. We have 16 employees and I think we did a pretty good job for the committee, for the community, I'm sorry. Um, I want to also thank like Mr. Harmon said, uh, Public Works have done a great job this weekend with taking care of the flood and everything. Had, had knocked Mr. Dowdy, he's our manager, and he said that this week is going to be a busy week for them because they're going to be cleaning up other messes that have occurred with this flood. And also they're going to be cleaning out more of our, um, drains and our, our ditches and everything else because of what Mr. Harmon pointed out, because of where people are placing their objects that were picked up for our city cleaning. Um, I want to, I want to thank you in here this evening, I feel like we're doing a really good job, I want to thank you all for the good job that you're doing, I want to welcome that again and congratulate Mr. Moore for his election, for the vote gentleman for the election here. Thank you for your service and that too, for the next year or two. So if no other further things, Mrs. Stumpf anything? Mr. Martin, Mr. Moore? Dan and I adjourned this meeting, thank you all.
So, uh, when you, when you say, when you say this is a hobby, what do you mean when you say this?
I just record city hall meetings.
It's a hobby?
I put it on my.
What is it you're hoping to come up with?
I just think more people are interested in what goes on.
I've been doing this 30 years. The thing you just said, I'm saying that about 25 years ago. Want to post it on YouTube.
Yeah, I upload it on YouTube, but I, I couldn't do a post on Facebook.
She's a city clerk, she's really nice, she'll get to know her.
She knows all about.
Okay, well, what I'm telling you is, I'll talk to her and find out where. Thank you, thank you over there. My friend, she wants to. You know, the hobbies and stuff like that. What happened? And she's really nice to me, she's very nice and she'll help me. She won't steer you wrong.